So I appreciate everyone coming out to learn more about this project and do express their views. I hope to take about seven minutes, if that's okay. So that's fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So first off, I'd like to be clear about what this project is and what this project isn't. This project, the proposed project, is a single wind turbine that would be placed on Grandpa's Knob, where there is an existing 300-foot-tall communications tower, an existing road, and existing power lines that go up to the knob. The tower for this turbine is a little under 300 feet high. It would be placed at an elevation 100 feet below where the communication turbine is, or where the communication tower is now. So then, the tower of the turbine would be lower than the communications tower. Then, there is a sweep of the blades. Blades are about 143 feet long. So that sweep of the blades, then, would go above the turbine height. This project is not the project that folks in this room and lots of other people so adamantly opposed in 2012. It is not a 20-wind turbine project going along seven miles of pristine bridge line. Those are two different projects, apples and oranges. This is a single turbine. That's what we're talking about. We want to do that to honor the history and the legacy of Palmer Putnam, who set up the first wind turbine in the world to be connected with an electrical grid in 1941. First off, I wanted also make clear that we recognize that there's no reason that you should trust me. We assume that you do not trust me. And the only way that I'm gonna earn your trust is by being honest, by being factual, right? By being transparent. And you'll make it right over time whether I'm trustworthy, if you are trustworthy or not. We may agree, we disagree, but it's my job to try to earn your trust if it's that I'm telling you truth about this project and presenting you facts. So that we can all make decisions based on facts. We are reaching out to the community of all, the community within the five towns that surround Grandpa's Knob. As soon as we receive information from the Public Utility Commission that this project would be awarded what's called a standard offer contract to sell electricity to Green Mountain Power at a specified rate for the next 20 years. That rate is 11.6 cents a kilowatt.
Is it how much?
11.6 cents a kilowatt. That rate is fixed for the next 20 years. If GMV raises your electricity rates over the next 20 years, if this project comes to be, it's not because of this project. This project has got a fixed rate of 11.6 cents for the next 20 years. A contract, a standard offer contract, is not a permit. We are just beginning the permitting and what's called the sort of project feasibility process. That's gonna take around 12 months. We have to do environmental impact analysis, sound impact, visual impact analysis. We have to have a whole discussion with Green Mountain Power, what's called a system impact analysis. What happens when a 1.5-megawatt turbine is plugged into the grid, right? That all takes time. As we produce these analyses, we wanna make that information public. What we propose is a monthly updated project patch that we will send to the five town managers at the end of each month that they can forward on to the select board to make, to use however and disseminate however so true. We thought having a monthly update would be better than just sending the fire hose of information or sending things at different times. But you would know at the end of every month, here's the latest project update. We hope in about 12 months' time to be in a position to submit the application for a permit, which is called a certificate of public good, at those, the Public Utility Commission. That permitting process is probably 12 months. So we're looking at a possible construction start if all of this process goes forward in maybe two years' time. 12 months of project analysis, feasibility, probably 12 months of permit. Okay, that's sort of where we are in the timeline. This is a community wind project, from our perspective. What does that mean? What does that mean? That means a couple things. Most concretely, it means that we propose to distribute, to share one half of the net annual operating profits of this turbine with the surrounding five towns and the communities that are impacted by this project. The other one half of the net annual operating profit goes to pay back the bank for the loan that we have to take out to build this project. What does that mean in more absolute dollar terms? We estimate, estimate, this is not a promise, this has not been set in stone. This is what our initial estimates show based on our assessments of project costs. It's hard to project, and we know project costs two years from now. Based on what we know the turbine can produce, based on what we know that 11.6 cents a kilowatt hour, right? We've got a sense of a gross revenue with what this turbine. And then, we've got operations and maintenance and insurance and taxes and paying back the loan and all that. We estimate now that the net, half of the net annual operating profits is around $3 million. That would go to the surrounding towns over the lifetime of the project. That number, we believe is a conservative number, but we won't know until we nail down the project cost and figure out exactly the financing to the banks and propose to share all the information with them. And every year, there will be an independent accounting firm that would go through the project accounts and the revenues and expenses and say, here are the net annual operating profits of this turbine. This is what goes to the charity, this goes to the owner of the project. The last thing, and then I'll stop, is this project has very significant environmental impact. We believe the economic benefits I just mentioned and the environmental benefits, they get a much more preferable honoring of Palmer Putnam than the initial Grandpa's Knob wind project than, for example, putting up a marble mine somewhere in town, says this is where it was. Those environmental benefits, what are they? Well, they're primarily mitigating climate. It's primarily avoiding carbon dioxide emissions from the electricity that would otherwise be produced by fossil fuels, carbon, coal, natural gas, oil ahead. We estimate the avoided carbon dioxide emission over the lifetime of this project to be 85,000 metric tons of carbon max. What does that mean? In other, more sort of grounded terms, that's about equivalent to 9.6 million gallons of gasoline or 100 million pounds of coal. It's also equivalent to the carbon that can be sequestered in a year by 100,000 acres. It's not an insignificant amount. So again, there are economic benefits of this project that we propose to share with all the communities around. There are environmental benefits primarily in the form of the used carbon emissions, and that is exactly why the Vermont Standard Offer Program, which is to promote renewable energy development in Vermont, has to be awarded at this contract. I'll stop there. Thank you for your time, and I will leave.
First of all, you know, as the town of West Rutland has been through this before, and I realize it was a much bigger project than you paid it to. But I think, I don't wanna dump water on the fire here, but I just don't wanna read you this. And I'm referring to the pages 26 and 41 of the West Rutland Town Plan, which specifically states that pertains to the town of West Rutland. "Industrial, commercial wind projects are prohibited." Alternative, and that's under alternative energy sources in that, in that, if you wanna look it up, you can hand, you can do it yourself. And on page 41, "The development above 1,000-foot contours should be extremely limited. Industrial, commercial wind development is prohibited." So what I'm getting at here is, back then, as a board, I'm not sure, I know I was on it, Chip was on it, we wrote and approved the town plan. It would be totally out of context for us to tell you openly, publicly, that we supported that project 'cause it would be going against everything that we, you know, had sat down on paper years ago. So you gotta understand the reason why you may not get an answer for support. And my last question to you is, given the citizens within the town of West Rutland have already decided that industrial, commercial wind development within the town of West Rutland is prohibited, how do you intend to circumvent the democracy achieved within the West Rutland Town Plan in order to push your project forward? And that's, that's what I got.
Would you like me to respond, please? So I have looked at the town plan, and I grew up in Hancock, Manhattan. My father was on the Town Planning Commission for three years. So I respect the work of the planning commission and the time and effort that's gone into those town plans. One point to say is to say that I would argue, first off, that our project is not an industrial, commercial wind project. It's a community wind project. We're not trying to make money the way a commercial wind project group is trying to do. It is not an industrial wind project that has multiple wind turbines. It is a single turbine with the main focus of honoring the history of this. Thirdly, the project study is technically in Castle. Castleton has a similar town plan that says the same thing, but it, uh, first references to the Castleton Town Plan where the project would be located. Next thing I would say is the initial visual simulations of the project that we have done, coming back to West Rutland, that we hope to share with, review with the town. The initial visual simulations that we've done show that the project will be essentially invisible for people in West Rutland, along the vast snowmobile track, the power line, if you can see this. There might be a brief view of the hot arc of the sweeping blades coming down Whipple Hollow for about 15 yards. Possibly from the cemetery, looking up through the trees, you might see the cops. But for 99% of folks living in West Rutland, they won't see this project. So we propose to share those visual simulations with you at the end of the month when they're ready. We have folks in the field taking photos from all sorts of different vantage points last week. It takes them time to put all that into their computer and make it so it's clear for anyone looking at it, where this is taken from and what the view will be like. We hope by the end of the month to be able to share that information. So, uh, I guess that's, that's how I would respond. No matter what happens, then you will, or even amongst all the towns, you will continue to pursue your project. We believe that the project merits to be studied and analyzed in terms of its environmental impact, in terms of visual impact, in terms of the economic impacts, in terms of the sound impact. Once we have that information and we can share that with you and we have a discussion about it, we'll make a decision as to whether we go forward or we don't go forward. We think right now is premature because if we don't have all the facts, we need to do it to you or anyone else in analysis having to find it.
Okay, I'm gonna do this.
Yep, of course, yep.
Something I have, you said the tower is gonna be down 100 feet below the bridge line to start with.
Yeah.
Of course, in my calculation, the tower that's up there that we got, the communication tower, is gonna be there, and that, you're gonna be 28 feet taller than that tower is. So if I can see that tower from my house or anywhere in town, your windmill, at the peak of your body, is gonna be 28 feet taller than that 310-foot tower is.
I think it'll actually be more than that, but...
So if I can see that tower now?
Yeah, you'll see the tips of the blades.
Yeah.
You'll see the upper arc of the blades. So that the tower would be placed at an elevation 100 feet north, northwest.
The arc of the, things are gonna be higher than the one that you already got. It's like 28, roughly 28 feet by calendar.
Yes.
Project, a 20-year project, I assume?
The contract, it's called a standard offer contract, is 20 years.
So you estimated your income based on 20 years?
We estimated the income based on a 30-year operational lifetime of the project.
So that $3 million is over 30, is over now?
30 years, yes, it's over 30 years. What the electricity rate will be after 20 years from now, we obviously don't know. We have a fixed rate for 11.6.
So that's roughly 100, your, your net, then, is, correct me, is $100,000 after your expenses?
On average, over those 30 years, the net is actually, the total net is $200,000, of which half would be $100,000.
This $100,000 is what you propose to the towns?
Correct.
So you're talking $20,000 a year to the town of West Rutland?
What we are saying, first of all, is that the towns need to have a discussion amongst themselves how that pie would get divided up, right? The project's in Castle. The real folks who are gonna be impacted by the project are along Lake Bomason, right? Hubbardton Battlefield, Minden Hill. There are different project impacts. So that's a, that's a discussion to have among the towns. That would probably be less than $20,000 a year for this project.
Yeah, but he said, like he said, it's gonna be talked over $2,500.
I'm sure.
We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get a big split.
I understand, we're not, we're not gonna get an equal share. But first of all, I wanna say that that estimate of $3 million is a conservative estimate, right? I don't wanna overpromise and underdeliver. I'd much rather say to you now, if we estimate $3 million in six months from now, to come back to you and say, the latest analysis suggests it's four and a half. But I don't, I don't wanna go in the other direction if I can avoid it, so that's...
And I honestly say to one of our listeners here that if I have to look at this, which I will, 'cause I live on top of Derby Hill, is my taxes gonna go down?
I think they only need one or two. Certainly, your values will be affected, maybe they're not.
That was recorded.
I do the same line of work as she does. And just as a reference, $20,000, I bet you is not even a penny on the taxpayer. So everybody in this room knows that. You can buy a coffee every morning, you can afford a penny. It's just, it gets laughable to me. Anyone who insults us with that kind of vibe, that's it, that's all I got.
Industrial, any sort of stuff provides, it is industrial, it's a backswing to your extent. This is an industrial project, and just otherwise is a lot. Like, second point I'd like to make, or question I have for you, is would you please mention to us about, since we're partners, which you said is, since we're partners, what is the LLC that's, um, that this is going to be registered under, do we have the name of that yet?
I believe it's Grandpa's Knob Community Wind LLC.
Okay. Are we privy to all the subsidies, tax breaks, and additional grants that you want to be receiving? And all the different new orphanage credits that you've received elsewhere? Does it all keep funding?
Do you need to let me know when you want to?
No.
Okay. First off, this is a standard offer project, there are no grants.
How about subsidies and taxes?
There are no grants.
How about subsidies?
Okay. Any renewable energy project, whether it's a wind project or a solar project, is eligible for a federal investment tax credit, okay? That was put in in 2009 under the Obama stimulus plan that initially provided an investment tax credit for 30% of the value of the project, right? It declined, I believe now it's a 26% or 22%, I should know that, but say it's 26%. That means that the owner of the facility, the owner of Grandpa's Knob Community Wind LLC, as the person who puts up the $4.5 million roughly, that's an estimated cost that may change over the next two years, right? Would be eligible to get that back, right? 26% of that project cost back from taxes that that person or that entity would otherwise pay the federal government, okay? There's also an accelerated depreciation for renewable energy projects, which is again, a federal public policy designed to incentivize renewable energy projects. It's because of those tax credits and the depreciation that the owner of the LLC can say, I'm okay only getting $3 million over 30 years back for a $4.5 million investment, and I'm okay sharing the other $2 million with the community. It's because of those tax credits and depreciation that the benefits, the economic benefits, are possible for the town, right? It is, it is for the owners of it, very close to a, again, which we can, we can spend endless time looking at the economics, but it's very early on. But to answer your question, yes, the owner of the LLC would be able to take advantage of the federal investment tax credit and the accelerated depreciation. And that's what would enable the project to operate and sense out a loss by sharing half of those profits.
Just only, I'm not sure I fully understand what you're saying is, you mentioned, yeah.
But that's, that's after, right? These are net annual operating profits. That's after the tax credits, after depreciation has been taken up. Because only the owner of the project is eligible for those tax credits and depreciation. The town is not eligible for those because it's not an owner of the LLC.
Okay, I have two quick things, um, my place, dude. Um, I have copies of the letter from the Regional Planning Commission, supporting our town plan, which is saving my bankroll into being, uh, if the application doesn't get that far. And then I have to hand out, uh, you know, a new geography, I've got the map with you. You know, I inherited some love of maps, although less love than my dad with the map. Looking, uh, yeah, do, uh, yeah, pass it right around. I think I have a month for anybody who wants one. And thank the God I'm giving it to my family. So looking at the map, my question, I have a lot of questions, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna save it at this one because it has been unanswered at several public meetings and shows you, oh. Give us a dot on the map, latitude, longitude, where precisely this site is going to be. We've been given vague references to the town line, to a drop in elevation, to maybe northwest, the communications tower, we need a dot on the map. And if you look at this little map here, the other question about geography I have is, why not Ira and why Proctor? Do we not understand that Ira just right into the middle of the Pittsburgh Bridge? So they're arguably more impacted than Proctor ever will be. And I, I don't know, did everything, do I ever hear tonight? I would think they'd be pretty mad that they didn't get off with this little ride. That's all.
I should have the latitude and longitude information get to you right now. I should have that in my notebook, but I don't. I'm happy to send it to you tomorrow, to post up on whatever, or you give me your email, I'll send it to you. I don't know the latitude and longitude. I've got maps at home on my computer that show where it is. I'll stop my head, I don't have that information, but I can get it to you tomorrow. It is in Castleton. It is about 1,000 feet from the Castleton-West Rutland border.
Do we know precisely where that even is? Because there are discrepancies on any map we'll ever look at. And so we'll hold that town line in that for you.
Again, I'm, I'm happy, we, we had the whole site survey by Krebs and Lanson Civil Engineers a couple weeks ago. I can, I can send you that information, but I don't have it right on the map. Okay, on the question of why Proctor and not Ira, it's because our initial, our initial estimates of the visual impact is that the project is not gonna be visible from here. With the exception of one or two very, very minor places where there are not, uh, again, this is preliminary, but the project will have some visitor coming down probably Route 3 from Proctor towards, uh, towards West Rutland, possibly. So we, it's, it's because of that that we thought we needed to reach out to Proctor. I have no problem reaching out to Ira.
Um, for the, for the resistance power line, is that the route that the power would reach the bridge? Or how is it gonna reach the bridge?
Yeah, it exists, uh, we have to, the existing power poles are these days grave poles, meaning that they're tall, strong poles with cross trees. We would have to string one more line along that, and that's a, that's a cost estimate that we don't have 'cause we haven't done the system impact study, we haven't done the facility study with Green Mountain Power, but that's what we have to, we need to exist.
Um, tell me, the wind probably be blowing over that bridge?
So there are two primary directions, southwest and northwest.
So the wind would come into West Rutland, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what you really haven't been mentioning is, of course, it's bound, you know, you travel along the winds, so the majority of this bound will come into West Rutland, correct?
So that's, uh, that's an analysis that we have to do. Vermont has very strict sound, uh, regulations that are mentioned in that one in fact. So we, we have to look at what is the decibel level of the project at certain hours of the day and at certain hours of night within, or within 100 feet of the closest adjoining land, right? We have to do those analyses. We haven't done them yet. When we do them, they're gonna be shared, shared to town managers with all the...
Okay, and you, and the company.
We have to pay those companies. They are activating stuff, no. No, these are independent experts, the environmental experts, the Arrowwind Environmental out of Honey, okay? We don't have any influence. It's all about what trust does the Public Utility Commission have in those experts, right? It doesn't, doesn't do us a good, to do an internal study and present that to the Public Utility Commission and say, oh, here's our sound map, you can believe us, right? Public Utility Commission say... Public Utility Commission say, "No, we don't." So, we have to hire independent experts who do their sound analysis. And if we can't, through their, their analysis show that we meet Vermont's sound regulations, we don't submit through company.
Who could have made the turbine?
The turbine is made by a company called Golden.
Under the origin?
Want me to keep going? The country of origin is China. Yeah. That's where, in fact, probably nine percent of wind turbines around the world are.
Anyone else? Those are not the specials on the board. Is that, do we have a townwide referendum on, do you know, the vote? Remember?
I don't remember wanting to.
Ask the board, I'm sure. To put that in the record, don't we find it? I don't remember. No, I can't remember. Those are all the same.
Yeah.
I don't know.
All the way back.
Have you estimated what your total value is when you do those projects, sir?
We have estimated, we have estimated. For something, and, and I'll tell you what that number is, but I want to be clear that this is an estimate because we're talking about if the project feasibility and permitting, uh, it all looks good, twelve months from now, we submit for a permit application and we get a permit, we're looking two years out. I can't tell you what the price of steel is today, gonna be, where it's gonna be in, in, in two years' time. I can't tell you what cement costs are gonna be. I can tell you, our estimate right now is $4.5 million.
And how long do you believe that will be on the public utility cost?
So, again, I would much rather have this discussion when we have better numbers for you. I can, I can tell you things now, but that's not going to, these things are gonna change as the project costs. We haven't even submitted the interconnection application to Green Mountain Power. They may come back and do a system impact study and say, "Oh, it's gonna cost you $250,000 to do a substation upgrade and to string those power lines." And all of a sudden, our project costs just jumped up above a number that we don't know. I can't tell you right now.
How big is your company? How big is the company that, when you, uh?
LLC, right? Which would own the turbine is one LLC that is owned by a large company.
And who's that, sir?
That's all of the renewables.
So, my question to you is, um, some of your good members, people, you've done this before. You have approached this before.
I have not.
Why? Why are you doing this?
I have not approached you.
Why? Why are you doing this?
Yes.
For one renewable that's already been voted down in every town that you are a customer. One renewable that you say is a memorial to a man that you could put a plaque up and not destroy the people that you own. Why are you doing this for one?
I'm answering the person. I'm doing this because, as a Vermonter, I care about the environment. I care about climate change. I care about the world, the world that my children and my grandchildren are going to live in. My personal investment in this project is because I want to reduce carbon emissions so ever I can. The fact that this is where the very first wind energy project connected to the grid in the world was ever done to be symbolically important for all of the wind turbines that are around the world.
Right.
Okay? I, I live in Burlington, Vermont, where I have a view of the Georgia mountain turbines, the Lake Champlain, and from where I rock. Right? I, I cannot hear from that.
So, we will.
Chill down. Your time is up, man. You think? Yes. I have got a lot of gear on.
Because it was too much for fun. You would have to have a foundation on the road, three, four, two, three, four, whatever. Last year, four. Um, the, um, habitat has been used where unbroken by the, they have the resources. These tax credits come from taxpayers, which are our dollars. Um, this fault, uh, Earth Renewables is owned by David Bitterstorff. And she wants to keep fifty percent of the profits and give the other fifty percent divided among the five towns. And so, I would say that if he wants to honor Mr. Putnam, that he should establish a scholarship in Mr. Putnam's name and he could take that scholarship with the profits that he's made from his runs throughout his state. And also, this offers the environmental impacts. Um, the whole load project and all its destruction is all equal to half a day's exhaust from the work. So, this would be absolutely nothing as far as pollution.
Right, just to hand you. Yes. You were.
Yes.
As I mentioned last week, at this week's election, we have not done the geotechnical analysis up there yet to know whether we will drill a blast, drill into the rock before a concrete foundation. We do not, at this time, anticipate blasting. If the geotechnical work says, "The only way you're gonna put this project up is if you blast." Well, we're gonna tell you that. Right now, we do not anticipate that.
Um, what about the road to get up there? We've all seen the size of these trucks that have these, um, windows out there. And so, quite a lot of destruction all the way out to that is, is out there. It's by, as opposed to us. And my other question is, if I could, if you're playing now, is, um, if we're gonna have, if we get out there, are planes safe?
I'm going up that road, uh, to the third, uh, height down there. So, I have a sense of the condition of the road. There are some spots in the road that would be, uh, a little more gravel and rock and reinforcement. There might be a turn or two that needs to get widened. We haven't done that work yet, right? But we will be doing it because we have to analyze that as part of our estimation of project cost and the civil engineering, that's what, that's required. I can tell you that the road is in. I, I think that might be an overstatement. Right? What there is right now is an existing road. The blades are not, you know, where the Georgia mountain blades are. Those are bigger turbines. This is a 1.5 megawatt turbine. It's a 143-foot. Okay? It is not a 200-foot-long blade, right? And so, we don't think we're gonna have to do much to go. Uh, there are already trucks that go up and down that road to service and do, have installed the communications tower. Again, we haven't done that work yet. We're, we're reaching out to you literally less than two weeks after we were appointed by the standard offer. We have to do that analytically. It's a totally fair question. I don't have the answer. But I, but we'll, we'll provide it.
The lights?
The lights, yes, good question. There would be, just like there is on the communications tower now, there would be one light because you've got aircraft. So, there'd be one be. We're going to look at, right? So, there, there would, there would be one big enough because that would, that's required by FAA.
Oh, upon, uh, on the site being, and that we don't have the exact dot on the map for this site. We don't know whether it's going to require blasting. We don't know. There's a lot of ifs and maybes. My understanding is the expectation with the Public Utilities Commission, when these things go to the CPG, is that these projects are supposed to be shuttle-ready. They are expected to have a high chance of success before they, the developer even bids on the standard offer program. And I am not hearing that this developer has any of those ducks in any roads whatsoever.
Before we submit the application for a certificate, then we have to have our ducks. We have to have done all those analyses. No one is going to spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're gonna have to spend on geotechnical work, visual analyses, uh, sound analyses, environmental analyses, system impact studies, facility studies with Green Mountain Power, purely on speculation without any, without any guarantee of a contract that at the end of the permitting process, if we got a permit, someone will buy the electricity. That, that would not happen. Now that we have a standard contract award offered from the state of Vermont, now we're gonna spend the money, the resources, to do the work so that twelve months from now, we'll know, or we will know whether we believe that we have a high chance of success or that we don't. And you'll have the same information that we have. But it's, it's incorrect to, to state that we should have spent all that money and have all that information before we even had a standard offer contract. We haven't even begun the permitting process yet.
Can I just ask? I mean, yes, the developer's gonna have to spend a lot of money on all this analysis, yada, yada. If the town wants to seek intervener status and oppose that, this CPG application, that will cost the towns a lot of money. Might David Bitterstorff want to contribute to a fund for the towns to have a part in some kind of democratic process of when this thing happens in our towns?
So, again, it's. So, let's just bring it back to West Rutland. Right? First off, the project is not in West Rutland. Secondly, the views of this project from West Rutland, we believe, and you have no reason to believe me now, but I think you will see, and everyone will see, when we share those visual simulations with you, that the potential viewpoints from West Rutland are going to be extremely, extremely limited. Absolutely, the towns have every right to intervene. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission has already indicated that it will intervene. I'm meeting with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission next week.
That's, I just remembered that I heard that the town owned, or Bitterstorff wanted for this single Vermont. How long had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to try to get that to up and build? Or is, or might be someone that has. Is the manufacturer the same ones that are starting use for Georgia mountain?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I can find out. Yeah.
We understand that it's been down for quite a while and it's only had like a ten-year lifespan. We're understanding that these were, we're being told these have a thirty-year lifespan. And now they're waiting for parts from China and it's been down for months.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I can find out. I, I wasn't involved in that project, so I.
And do you know who made Putnam's first windmill? Who manufactured it, sir?
Uh, it was manufactured, I believe, and I've, I've got a Wikipedia in here somewhere that I can, I can find it. It was manufactured by a company in New York. If you had a moment, I can.
I, I can tell you, it was made by Morgan Smith and GE. So, if they wanted to honor Putnam, why aren't you using American GE-made turbines? GE hasn't used one of Rutland's powers. I mean, why wouldn't you use an American turbine? And also, since you're worried about global warming and climate change of the planet, what is the carbon footprint of a turbine to come from China? And would your windmill offset that carbon footprint? So, are you gonna make the planet greener by cutting out that windmill or having it delivered?
Not bad. So, obviously, uh, wind turbines get shipped in container ships, and, um.
They're also made in China, which is very dirty.
I'm, I'm trying to answer your, your, your question. I'm manager, a person responsible for community relations. I'm not responsible for where, you know, whether it's Golden Wind from China or General Electrics from Rutland. I can't answer your question, why not that? My guess is, it's a question of cost and quality. That's, that's my guess. If I was the owner of the project, I would be looking at those things and say, "I, I need a 1.5-megawatt turbine. What's the best combination of cost and quality that's gonna deliver the 4 million kilowatt-hours a year? And I want it a reliable way that's gonna require the least amount of operations and maintenance because that, it's in my interest to have this thing function all the time. If it isn't a burning, I'm not making any. But, if those are just principles of how you would select one from another, I think.
But to truly honor Putnam, I mean, that would truly honor the first.
It was Putnam who paid up with the design and even worked.
I don't remember that, so. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm really not a station manager. This is not, first dock will be shown. This is not your first meeting. This is the second one we've come to between the two of you. So, really shame on you as a manager. Oh, they fired you for not having all the information. Come to the people and waste their time. I said before, I watch in my backyard, I'll say again, I will keep fighting you. Now, what are all the values? Let's get to that. You know, we have a lot of hunters that could hunt on different pieces of properties and hills. They will see that, oh, no. So, what about those? Where are all of those years gonna go? In fact, you know, I only have one or two bats that when we started building up here. You know, I created nineteen out of my buildings. Yes, there are bats in my balcony and I've heard of one. And I really, because you're trying to take my environment away. And how dare you then tell us, "Oh, it's gonna be made in China." Shame on you. So.
Is that a piece of wood?
Yeah.
You got it?
Well, after this work, labeling of the earth on things, after the sociological, after the environmental impact, after the impact to rare and questionable hazards, after alterations to property values and tax cases, after you provide communities, after you impact local lives and homes, people have their homes as their asset, most of us, in life. Um, after all of this, um, what's to stop more projects from happening on that ridge? Because, and Bitterstorff basically added that he has no control over what happens with other rich landowners and who they lease to and how they lease to, what they choose to do. And this is true, but your project will create inroads, literally and figuratively, for the ridge lines to be developed. And Bitterstorff's ultimate goal, his goal, was to have 200 miles of ridge line wind in this state that is not 200 miles long. What's to stop it from happening?
So, there are a number of points made, and I'll also take advantage of, address some of your comments. All of the environmental impact analysis has to be done, right? We have to look at the impacts on rare and dangerous species. Whether they're bats or deer wandering habitat, or it's bear migration, or their fertile springs and their frogs, and we have to do all of that. Okay? So, after we have that analysis and that, and we can see what the impact is, rather than project now what we think it will be. before, before we've done any analysis. So I'm just saying, all the environmental analytic work needs to be done and will be shared. Okay, so you will have the same information we have about those project impacts. The question of, the question of precedent and whether this creates a domino effect or, uh, one mushroom goes up, there're more mushrooms sprout around. That's a totally fair question. That's a totally fair question and a fair concern. And what weakened from all Earth Renewables or David Litterstork is to say that all Earth Renewables is not gonna put out projects anywhere else along the street. Won't propose to put up a project anywhere else on the street. The purpose of this project is, is largely to honor that history of former Putnam. He doesn't have an interest. And he's willing to commit and write and say, I won't, I won't propose any other projects. He, just, so I can finish. We have site control over about fifteen acres on top of Grandpa's Knob. It's not, is part of the seven hundred and twenty-five acre park. Right, we do not have site control along the entire ridge. We, we can't, we can't prevent someone else from coming in and saying, oh, well, they got one up on Grandpa's Knob. Um, we're gonna try and put one up somewhere else. Right, we, we don't have that capability. What, what I would say is that this project is unique in the fact that there is an existing road right now. There are existing power lines right now. There is a three hundred foot communications tower on that ridge line right now. It is already developed and disturbed. It is not pristine. It doesn't require a whole lot of tree clearing and road building and power line installation, which would be much more environmentally impactful. So any other project along that ridge line, you'd be facing much, much bigger hurdles in terms of environmental impacts, in terms of the town plans, in terms of the cost of doing it. That doesn't mean that someone couldn't try. So I, 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 I get your concern. I think there, there's, we can only connect that we wouldn't try to do anything other than this one's in the dirt. That, that's an interpretation. Thank you. Everyone, suppose questions. There's about one minute, it's done. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take a long time, but thank you, Steve.